Agent logged off.
downtown visitor, somewhere people from out of town can go or people from town. And so part of that was to make a video and I contacted Bo here and basically he went from one end to the other of downtown to a bunch of fun businesses and made thirty second commercials for him and I'll let him speak more about that but and then the idea is that it will always be running in the Fournay lobby twenty-four seven so anybody from town or anybody from out of town that maybe had wants ideas of what to do downtown can go watch this video and then the other piece of that is it was always my idea that the grand staircase in the second floor atrium area is kind of part of town so people should be able to go and enjoy it or check it out or like I call it a five minute tour so if you want to just go up to second floor and see the grand staircase and the old glass ceiling you can do that Monday through Friday and then watch the video and then just explore within a couple blocks of the Fournay of the businesses that are on this video and really these businesses are the strong reason that people come downtown already so it's really you know kind of geared for somebody that hasn't been downtown I think of like when my kids come to town they always want to go to Willow and Ivy they always want to go to the soap store certain things and so this video kind of enhances that experience for somebody that's not familiar with all those great businesses that are already attracting people to our town so I don't know Bo you can say more about the video.
Uh yeah I was pretty excited when he asked me to do this so it was pretty easy to get them all to agree because they basically got a free promo video so I don't know who's gonna deny that so you know a lot of small towns you know you don't really think maybe your business needs video done but now with social media and websites and everything it was nice to provide that for them and it's pretty cool video seeing it play down at the floor level of Fournay building so if you're all walking around you should pop in there and check it out and yeah the second floor of the Fournay building is really cool and it's nice that it's open to the public to go look at done a lot of work for it um so yeah hopefully some other businesses might see this and we think we're gonna add the art museum downtown to it and stuff so if anyone watching wants to get added to it you can reach out to us and we'd like to keep adding to it.
Yeah.
So I think we'll play the video now if anyone has a question afterwards we'll answer those.
Sure.
Welcome to historic downtown Crookston and the Fournay building. There's a lot to do within a short walk and this video shows you several fun things you can do while you're in downtown Crookston. While here at the Fournay building we invite you to the second floor to see the original grand staircase and updated all new glass ceiling. We hope you enjoy your time here. Enjoy the video. Willow and Ivy is located at one twenty-three South Broadway in the former Fire Hall Police Station building. We offer both gifts and antiques, gifts from candles, lotions, home decor, frames, kitchen items, and books. We have a children's area with stuffed animals, books, toys, and games. The antiques are mixed in on the main level and upstairs there are many rooms of antiques. There's everything from fine glassware to oil cans, beer signs, furniture, toys, and vintage books. Open Monday through Saturday nine AM to five PM. Check out Willow and Ivy on Facebook.
We believe in doing real good in the world so we use the highest quality ingredients we can find to create real good products that people love to use. We also donate to worthy causes. This means that our products feel good on your skin and you can feel good in your skin. Do good, feel good, feel good.
Welcome to Whitman's Candy Shop, a sweet tradition since nineteen eleven in Crookston, Minnesota and home to the famous Chipper. Passed down through four generations, our commitment to quality remains unmatched. Come experience the magic of Whitman's Candy Shop where every bite tells a story of tradition, care, and the joy of indulgence. Welcome to China Moon, your go-to spot for the most authentic Mandarin cuisine in the Red River Valley. Indulge in our simple, affordable, and unforgettable dishes. Taste the true essence of Mandarin cuisine with us here at China Moon in downtown Crookston. Crookston Floral, we are dedicated to excellence in floral arrangements, gifts, and antiques. Choose from our large inventory of fresh flowers, offering flower services for all events and holidays. Our antiques and gift area has a wide variety of items. Crookston Floral, where every arrangement tells a story. In the heart of Crookston, Minnesota stands a timeless icon, the Grand Theater. Steeped in history and brimming with nostalgia, it's one of the oldest continuously operating theaters in the nation. Enjoy first-run movies on the big screen accompanied by the best popcorn in the world. Welcome to the Grand Theater.
Creating Confidence is a new boutique in town offering size-inclusive, affordable options for everyone. We are located at two eleven North Broadway in Crookston, Minnesota, right past Bremmer Bank. Our store hours are Monday through Friday from three PM to seven PM and Saturday nine AM to five PM. You can also find us on social media at Creating Confidence with Nicole. We hope to see you soon.
Welcome to Erickson Embroidery and Second Street Boutique, your haven for style and personalization. Unleash your creativity with custom designs for sport teams, businesses, and beyond. Also step into our trendy boutique on Second Street where fashion meets flair. Erickson Embroidery and Second Street Boutique. Visit us today and let your style shine. Welcome to Sister's Corner, your one-stop destination for unique finds. Explore vintage items, furniture, decor, and more. Discover new and consigned clothing and dive into a world of creativity with creations by twenty-five-plus artists. Sister's Corner, where every corner has a story.
We invite you to stop down to Wonderful Life Foods in the heart of downtown Crookston. We're a national foods market that has a wide variety of grocery, deli, bakery, and coffee options. We have plenty of seating at the front of the store for a person to have a latte or a bite to eat. All of our sandwiches and soups are made each morning and are packaged up for a quick grab-and-go option. All of our bakery items are homemade from scratch right here at the store daily. Catering options and call-ahead orders are always welcome. Stop by the store at one fifty North Main Street or give us a call at two eight one eleven twenty-five. Wonderful Life Foods, keeping healthy simple.
For over fifty years, True Value Hardware in Crookston has been your trusted local home improvement store. From brooms to snow blowers, we've got it all. Your one-stop shop for all your hardware needs. True Value Hardware, where quality meets community. Jeff Evers Properties has opportunities to lease space in several buildings throughout Crookston. If you're looking for business space in Crookston, we currently have offices and retail starting at just three ninety-nine a month, including utilities. Call Jeff Evers to learn more about these spaces.
Well done.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Any sort of comments, questions?
I, go ahead, Morgan.
I was just saying that was fantastic. Thank you guys for putting that together and doing that for the community.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, Mr. Thank you for doing this. Intended audience would be whom?
I mean, all these businesses, there can be really any age, you know, like China Moon, anyone can go eat there, the soap store, I mean that's good gifts for everyone. So I mean obviously like ten-year-olds don't care to watch this stuff but like fifteen, eighty-five.
Well, I mean, it's anybody that's like coming in for a hockey tournament, for somebody who's coming in for, to visit U N C to like check stuff out like just, just that they're aware that there are things in downtown.
Yeah, or if you're newer in town, you know, I have people come into the theater two years later and they're like, I didn't even know there was a movie theater in town.
Yeah.
Like people really live in your own lane, you know, so it's.
Yeah, and then you do a great job of the movie theater, been there many times. So it's nice to see you here, by the way.
Thank you.
See your talents overflow in other areas as well. That's nice. Um, I would just, it's so, so, but it's, it's like Henry, because you say, oh, they're here for other reasons and then it's the show downtown as well. So you wouldn't highlight things like the Oscars, they're ready, correct? Is that what you're, is that what you're getting at?
Oh, I'm not getting at that. I mean, I think we should highlight absolutely everything that we have, but I mean, people come in for different reasons and they come in, but I mean, let them know of everything that we have is the thing.
And that's, that was my, my comment is I think that's great. Um, if it was just for the downtown, I'd say you're spot on.
It is, it is. It's really, it is just for the downtown. It's really for people that are walking through downtown. Maybe they walk by the Fournay and they can see the video at Saturday night displaying. So it's really a downtown-based video. It's not for.
Yeah, kind of maybe to get, get downtown more foot traffic, you know, like all these businesses. I'm sure they all would love some more people to pop in, you know, like to be honest, I, that was the first time I was ever in Willow and Ivy was filming that video. So like I don't really go to antique stores that often, so.
That's wrong, I'm going to.
Maybe, maybe, maybe more stops now. But like, like China Moon, I bet you lots of people haven't been in there. I bet a lot of people haven't even realized the soap stores in town. So yeah, it's just kind of a way to promote businesses in town, help them out and just, and then yeah, like he's got a lot of space in that lobby so we're gonna work on making some more stuff to make it a little more inviting for people to pop in and because we don't really have a visitors bureau in town here, you know, where people can stop in if they're trying to find something else. So maybe this is kind of something like that.
Yeah, that's kind of the idea is people would come to the Fournay building or if they just happen to be there or a business tells them, go watch the video down over here, give them an idea of different places that they can go and then use that lobby and even the second floor is just a place for the community to be able to watch this video. Other things will be in there eventually and really as a home base for downtown and just a free thing for people to go do and check out. So it's kind of inviting people to come downtown if they haven't been in a while and then people from out of town to come downtown, you know, maybe start at the Fournay, check that out, then they, they can explore within a block or two each way. It's a, no, come spend a Saturday morning or during the week or whatever. It's more, it's a little bit tourism, but it's also people from town, like you say, that haven't been downtown in a while. I don't need to go downtown. I don't need anything. Or this video can be shared, like you say, at U N C, it could be on the big screen at the hockey arena. Hey, go check out the downtown. Here's ten things you can go do that they wouldn't know about or maybe there isn't a flyer saying, here, go to China Moon or there isn't. It's just trying to promote downtown, trying to promote getting downtown and what there is to do. And these are what we believe in, you know, obviously the strong businesses that are already bringing a lot of people, but just making it more aware, promoting downtown.
That's a good start to keep it up.
Do you want feedback on this?
Yeah, for sure.
And we have it online too. So like, well, I've shared it on my page and like we were talking, whatever groups that are, would be available to post this, could post it, get it so they could share it on their pages and stuff too.
Well, and like you said, all the businesses got this for free. It didn't charge me very much. We put a lot of volunteer time into it. So, you know, really it was, you know, a good thing for downtown. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was just saying, said, said already, you know, I was very impressed with that. And I think if we could get that out more in the community and even on our website, the city website, that would definitely benefit. So it's more, more known.
Yeah. Yeah, wherever, wherever they want to post it, they can, we'll get on the file.
I've seen a lot of your work, Sawyer. Very talented young man.
I appreciate what you're doing.
And I mean, what I'm saying is, yeah, everybody that's coming into town should see it, but I think everybody that's in town should see it as well. Because I don't even think people in town know of all this stuff.
For sure.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it seems like when I used to be involved with the hockey, you know, it seems like tournaments would be in town and everybody kind of stuck to the north end of town.
Yep.
You know, so this way if it's out there, maybe it'll get them to explore downtown, see what's going on.
Yeah.
So, great job. Hey, anybody else got comments?
Keep it up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, Bo, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Good start.
Okay, this brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
I got Joseph and Derek, thank you. Discussion, hearing, non-rule call, please.
Brecken.
Aye.
Aye. Justel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We do have a public hearing. Ashley, please.
Your Honor, you forgot the consent agenda.
Oops, I'm sorry. Jumping ahead. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Dawn and Henry, thank you. Role call, please.
Brecken.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Emma.
Aye.
Justel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now to the public hearing.
Yes, Your Honor. Item seven point zero one is a public hearing regarding the special assessments for the city of Crookston. The total amount proposed to be assessed is three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents for delinquent mowing charges and the amount proposed to be assessed of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and five cents for unpaid water and sewer charges, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, before I open this public hearing to ensure everyone has a fair opportunity to speak, each person will have up to three minutes to provide comment. When come forward, state your first, last name and address, please. All remarks should be directed to the council and must be related to the subject of this hearing. Please be respectful of others. No interruptions or personal attacks will be permitted. When your time is up, Ashley, we'll kindly ask you to finish your sentence so we can move on to the next speaker. Okay, I will open this public hearing. Would anyone like to address counsel? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. All right, regular agenda, Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Item eight point zero one is a resolution regarding the approval of fees for cannabis application within the city of Crookston.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Make that motion, Your Honor. I got Dawn and Clayton, thank you. Uh, discussion, Darren, a little brief on this?
Sure, yeah. As we discussed in November third, Ways and Means meeting, the city of Crookston has adopted an ordinance regulating cannabis businesses in the city of Crookston. This resolution will adopt the fees, fee amounts, as they pertain to the cannabis application. Also at a later date, these fees will be adopted to the city of Crookston fee schedule. In some detail, the resolution of fees are as following. Non-refundable application fee of fifty dollars, the initial registration fee up to five hundred dollars or half the amount because of initial state license, whichever is less, or renewal fee up to one hundred, one thousand dollars or half the amount of the state renewal license, whichever fee is less.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? So if this resolution doesn't pass, that means the county can pretty much, I don't know, all a good way to say it, take over. We have no control over.
So the, the city would have to draft a resolution allowing the county to have control over the city of Crookston's cannabis regulations and application fees.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, can I role call, please?
Brecken.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Emma.
Aye.
Justel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item eight point zero two is a resolution regarding the approval of anchor marketing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Henry. Discussion.
So our marketing coordinator, I guess, in conjunction with E D A, sought proposals from three advertising agencies to help develop a strategic communications plan for the city of Crookston. Some of the marketing strategies would help develop a strategic communications plan, logo, brand creation, graphics, web design, and paid media updates. I can also defer to Keenan if he has any further he'd like to add to this.
Evening, everyone. No, I was really excited to move forward potentially with this project as kind of one of my bucket list items when I first started. Kind of comprises of two different things with this proposal. Firstly, as was mentioned earlier, was a strategic communication plan. A lot of the things that I've done up until this point has been really self-guided. So one of the things that I'm really excited about is to have a essentially outsider's opinion to be able to see how we can best communicate with our residents. You know, I really hate to hear in a community meetings when, you know, things pop up about, you know, we're doing an event at downtown and people didn't hear about it or we're doing communication about the Highway Two corridor project and some people might be blindsided by it saying it's the first time that they're hearing about it. And obviously I want to do the, my job to the best of my abilities and the strategic communication plan would assist with that. They would be doing research on all aspects of our residents to be able to put together a communication plan to put together recommendations for best ways for me to effectively communicate to our residents. And then the second portion of the anchor marketing plan would be centered around Crookston's branding. So as was mentioned before, this would comprise of multiple things, but mainly new logo design, new tagline, positioning statement, essentially refreshing the city of Crookston's branding. You know, one of the things that I was really looking forward to this is that at least me personally, I feel like our branding right now doesn't accurately reflect what the city is all about. In addition to personally speaking an outdated logo, you know, we don't have a tagline, we don't have a positioning statement and ideally what this would be is for us to be able to do a facelift for the city and be able to show, you know, our residents what we're all about. There would be, you know, a lot of implementation steps as this is going on. You know, we've got community outputs as far as, you know, working with our residents because I know that would be really important to them. You know, their city reflects them, so I would want them to be a part of the process. And then as far as putting everything together, you know, there wouldn't be any like, hey, we get the report back, okay, let's move forward. There would be plenty of additional steps going into it, you know, council approval, you know, just laying out exactly how we want to implement it and things like that. And then there's also additional portions of this campaign as well. So like paid and earned media. So when the proposal comes back and we're ready to roll out the new branding for the city, you know, there's paid media that can help us with presenting our, our new, our new branding. Sorry, I don't know why it's stuttering. My apologies. And then as far as the total investment for this campaign, it is a thirty-thousand-dollar investment. However, under community development for printing and advertising in the city budget, we do have the funds available set aside for a larger project like this. So we wouldn't be pulling from reserves or anything like that. It would be basically permission to be able to use the budget to move forward with a larger project. I think that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
I think, um, are, are you gonna be heading up this? Like, the thing is, it's like, I love this idea. I love having it branded, have our stuff be Crookston. I'm just worried about trying to hire out, have some company be like, here's a tagline for your town.
No.
Like, and I, like, I think somebody who's been here, you've been here for a year now. You've been here for a while. Like, I, I want to have somebody who has some, like, insight to like put the tagline and stuff. I don't, I don't want to just be like, company come up with some random thing for us.
Yeah, absolutely. No, this was something that was heavily communicated by anchor marketing is that, you know, we need to have a lot of community input as a part of this. You know, we need to make sure that even though we are hiring an outside firm and they're relatively local to the Minnesota region, so while they're not obviously based in Crookston, they are familiar with our region. You know, our, you know, who knows us better than our residents? And then this will be myself, I guess, leading the conversation, but it wouldn't be me necessarily saying, because I am still relatively newer to the city, this wouldn't be me saying like, hey, we need to implement X, Y, and Z as a part of this. So that's why we would be throughout this process, getting community involvement every step of the process.
Like, I understand that, but I mean, like, I feel like you know what you're doing and we've hired you to be our marketing person. and we've hired you to be our marketing person, hiring people. I want your fingerprints. I want you to be able to, like...
I'm not saying I would take a back burner and let them go all the way.
I want to see, like, I think you're a smart dude and that you can do something good for this. I want to see that happen.
Oh yeah, myself and the EDA carry, all of us, we would be heavily involved with it as well. And then, you know, taking community input to be able to put together something really great.
All right, thanks, Keen.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I mean, just myself driving through Foston and Purim, I think they, you know, done an excellent job as far as their economic development and...
They got those great murals up in all that.
Right, yeah, you know, and, you know, granted, Purim's close to Lake Country and, you know, but that's a booming little community and I, I think there's a... I have family that lives in Foston and there's a lot more action going on in Foston in the last few years than there was, I'd say, a dozen years ago or half a dozen years ago. So, I think this firm has done an excellent job of those communities. Further discussion? Role call, please.
Brecken.
Aye.
Aye.
Emma.
Aye.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.03 is a resolution regarding the approval of the 2026 grants for nonprofit organizations, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Dawn, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Clayton, thank you. Discussion.
So again, Your Honor, this is a resolution detailing expenditure of Mount Puffin grants as discussed in the November 3rd council meeting. It's also provides council final opportunity to discuss any amendments or any other amounts if changes need be made.
Thank you. With the money we are doing for the grant applications, you know, this is adding four levy points to our levy, so I'm just throwing it out there. Does anybody have any reservations about who we funded or how much we funded?
I just wanted to make this, and Delancey's not here today, but the comment he, he sent, sent out, sent out at the end was, do you realize what we've done? We've just said yes to much of worthy organizations in times of potential financial crisis. That's kind of how we ended our discussion last time. It's, it's tough because these are all great organizations. But it is, I think, Your Honor, I think it is useful to revisit, certainly to make sure that we're doing the right thing. There's nothing wrong with that. And then I would go back to Karen, you, do you, any, any information about the reserve number yet?
So, you know, a fair answer to your question would be that we currently have about 10.6 million in our investment funds. And we are currently working on deciphering what is restricted or unrestricted funds at the council's discretion.
The reason why I ask that is because that's always used as a, as a, almost like a scapegoat to say, well, we can't do this because we don't know how much. But now we have some parameters on that. We don't know what the level of high is, but there's, we're not zero.
Right, in a previous finance, so we've been meeting weekly sometimes, a couple times a week, the finance meetings as we're working through the audit. And we, we have those firms also trying to help us decipher, again, what's restricted, unrestricted, and quoting from them, that's very difficult to do. We're in an audit once not completely completed, but we do have that amount in our, our, our investment accounts, so... Just kind of give you an idea of where we're at, kind of that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I guess I'm still where I was that I was not prepared to provide that amount for nonprofit of knowing where we stand and what we need to do to put stuff back into reserves and plan ahead. I know a few, at least one of those organizations has received a very large donation, which is amazing and awesome. And I remember part of what their request was, I think, was to go towards that, so, I don't know, that's just where I'm at.
I mean, I could go through the dawn once again and what was asked before, if the council would like, or further discussions. Yep, okay. So again, Golden Link, they asked for $75,000 for community health, entertainment, and educational events, $50,000 for public transportation, $50,000 for public entertainment, and Karen's share, organization of Crixton, $15,000 for operational needs. Total of $113,000.
Okay. Well, I guess last council meeting or, or when we did have going through the grant application, the only two I wanted to fund was the Golden Link in Tri Valley. You know, and Tri Valley is, uh, very important to get, it's used a lot by our community. Golden Link, you know, we do, I guess, I'm back from years ago, we do a lot for the younger generation and I think it's only fair we do stuff for the older generation. And they do offer more than, you know, what is said here. I mean, they have drivers' training or education for the old people like me, I should say, and, uh, you know, they, they offer a lot more than just their meals and card games and everything else they do down there, so that's where I'm at with these grants, but...
I guess that's where I was planning to.
Morgan, when you were talking earlier, were you, were you sort of nicely suggesting to cut down the overall amount?
Well, it seems like there is a specific one that you want.
No, I, I think the ones that I had originally planned, and I was verbal about it last time, was supporting the Golden Link and Tri Valley. And I also felt cutting down for their full request, though I could be persuaded. I am just struggling at $113,000 and supporting all four. Just looking at if we are supporting, which ones will support the largest amount of our community members, and that's where I came with those.
Well, I mean, I feel like the chair is a huge support for people.
I, I'm not saying that they are not all of them. If we have the money, I would like to give to every single one that could come and ask. But just knowing where we are at, looking at which ones serve the largest population. And that's just where I came with those.
Okay, there was a chair that serves the largest.
I'm not saying that they don't serve a, a part and a large amount of people. That is just where I am looking at where we are at with the amount that we have.
So another way to look at this is if you come up with a dollar amount, and then you say that's the dollar amount that we're willing to fund, then you, you decrease everything that people have already voted on to that amount.
Well, maybe we came up with a dollar amount and we were under that one.
Well, sort of. I mean, I mean, I...
Sort of. We said 120 and we were under 120. That's, I don't, I don't see how that's sort of...
And I will say I do support the 120 either.
So I think the opposite, I mean, to table this for further discussion, I mean, the means are needed for it on the resolution.
I just want to clarify something. Henry had just said, what I meant by sort of is that we, we, we vote on each of these individually. And we look at it and say that on the overall amount, this is what we suggest. And then you, you diminish every one accordingly, so that you don't go over that amount that members might be comfortable with. That's, that's what I meant.
Well, already, well, already did that.
Why didn't we set a number at all?
Already did that.
I mean, we set a number.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the resolution as it stands.
There is already a motion and a second, we just need to have a vote.
Yeah. I, I'm just saying that, you know, we are looking to, trying to keep our levy as low as possible and we're looking to build our reserves. And this, personally, I don't think this helps funding this amount of money. I mean, is it opening up a can of worms for next year? That's all I'm asking.
So if, if Golden Link wasn't funded at that total amount, how much, does that mean it closed or...
Well, no, but I mean, they came down, their initial ask was 90 plus. You know, they came down to 75, but...
But that was...
They didn't go to 75.
That balance...
Which is right, it's our choice, so we could even go to 60 or 50, because that's a lot of money.
The thing is that we agreed on this several years ago, two or three years ago, that there was going to be some cuts. And at that time, we voted to stay at 75,000. And we went from, I think it was 92,000 or something like that. Am I correct, Darren?
Yeah, it was 90, 92 or 95.
92.
Yeah, so, you know, it was passed back down to lower it. And they have done some changes to help. So, I guess I would be willing to go down, to get lower. The idea is we have to save money. And we can't put the coin to everybody.
Well, do you want to table it for two weeks, bring it back, or do you want to have a vote on it?
We're never going to get any, each of us have our own thought on which one's more important and we're never going to come together. We, we go back and forth, week after week after week, and not come to an agreement. Um, we kind of, I, and it, it went through last meeting, not as a vote, but we agreed to this amount. So if we're gonna reevaluate and change the amount, we got, we gotta just make a decision at some point and...
Yeah, I mean, we, we all...
This could be never-ending.
We, we put through each of these things to a vote, and the ones that pass, pass.
Yep.
So I mean, at this point, it's, what are we gonna do? Like, who's gonna back off?
I feel like it's just kicking the can down the road.
Let's just vote. Well, you see, I just have a clarification then. So if it said, if it's voted as no, what does that mean?
Means that none of the, none, none of the grants will make it through.
Okay, so would that be good?
This is as a resolution to approve all of the grants.
Okay, small for the vote.
Brecken.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Emma.
Aye.
Justell.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, this brings us to council point, reports. Darren, anything else tonight, please?
Uh, no, nothing else, Your Honor. My report and public works was attached to the agenda items sent out to council. If you have any other questions, we're open to that, but thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, anything tonight?
Nothing, Your Honor, tonight.
Thank you. Derek?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Wendy?
Nothing from me.
Thank you.
Only. Just again, thank you to Bo and Jeff for putting that together. That was great. And then we had also met as a steering committee to discuss the Highway 2 depart, or, um, the Highway 2 project, and just working towards that and the aesthetics for it.
Thanks, Morgan.
Joseph? Uh, yeah, ditto. Great job, thank you for that. And then also through the Cheetah Board, through that, there's a group working on trying to stop Emerald Ashmore, and he just submitted another grant that's in collaboration with the city. He's trying to stop and save the 1 billion asteroids across the state. So this will be the second grant he's submitted in a very short amount of time.
Thank you. Henry? Clayton?
Nothing from me.
Thank you. Hi, Jeff, once again, thank you very much. Thank Bo for me too, when you see him. Also, was on the corridor with Morgan, we're so maturely getting there on design and, and Jeff, of course, is on part of that committee. And I guess there's a few more hiccups we might be seeing down the road after talking with Mary, but we'll get through them. Carrie will finally get the information from Mary, so we want to make sure it's right, so... Okay, that's all I have. Just a reminder that we do have a Ways and Means meeting tonight. Nothing else become before council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Animals outside, whether planned or not. I think my other concern would be at least holding a USDA certification. I'm not saying that.
Who's holding it USDA?
But I am not talking about him. I am having to look at this from.
So who are you talking about?
I am talking about we are making a decision based on this community and what is moving forward and not one person. And that is just how I make my decisions. It is not based off of one person. It is based off of how he would like to move forward with your industry or community.
I mean, there's no slaughterhouse that's gonna be implemented anywhere that doesn't have a USDA certification. They wouldn't be able to operate.
I went and talked to multiple slaughterhouses. I have gone and drove. I have visited. I have talked. I have talked. And there is a lot of them that don't.
No.
And they're they're large ones, I'm just saying.
No, they're not.
Oh, exactly. They're tiny ones that could come in.
No. If and they were somewhere in town, somewhere out. But I am just saying that.
Will you please come to the podium, friend?
Thanks. My name is Jacob Snyder. I just wanted to come approach.
Can I get your address too, please?
Uh, three eight seven Crescent Avenue.
Thank you.
Longtime Croxton resident, grew up in Croxton. Um, I have several issues with the um, some of the things that have happened in this proposal. Um, you know, this this project is to really expand a business that Mr. Appima has brought to this community. And it is a beacon in our community. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but this started as a concrete mixing facility in two thousand six. Um, he made it into the business it is today. And I believe there's a lot of chatter about the term slaughterhouses and that it's gonna be thousands of animals sitting outside in a truckload, waiting for Mr. Appima to process the animals. Um, his site doesn't even simply have enough room to to do that. So he is he is already prohibited by his size of his lot. Um, you know, really, really, the thing that really concerns me is that um, I think he's being very much um, put under the microscope that he's doing something wrong. And uh, I don't appreciate it. Um, he's looking at processing five to seven cows a day. And he wants to be USDA certified in order for him to sell that meat that he takes in from a livestock operator to you, to me, to the the citizens of this community. Um, I don't think you'll find a person that doesn't agree with me that B and E puts out great products. And being USDA and running USDA guidelines only simply means he can take that one meat from the farmer and put it on your table, not give it back to that farmer for him to sell it to somebody else. That's the only thing it does. That's the only difference. Um, and to prohibit him from doing so is a travesty. Um, I wanted to approach the council to let you know I'm deeply passionate about this. Um, I've lived in Croxton for thirty seven years of my life. Um, I work in the industrial district. I go by there every day. I've never seen anything out of the out of the ordinary of B and E meats. Um, and I have one final thought. You know, if there's all this concern about meat processing and slaughterhouses as being a permitted use, then I I suggest you put two standards in place because they just keep coming to the the council. No animals outside the building. And that at all times, the property must be in line with the uh, city of Croxton rules, state of Minnesota and federal rules and regulations. Having anything over that is just an oversight of his business. Um, their numbers uh, don't even get into it because he's already regulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jacob, that's really good. Thank you.
So I have a question for you, Mike. Would us putting out no livestock outdoors prohibit your business in any way?
You'd say no, but what's gonna happen if? If you have to, if you have more?
That's my question, but that that is why I'm saying.
No, that's why I'm just asking you. I'm just asking you as your opinion because I wanna know what you have to say. I know my answer because I built the building to not have them outside.
Okay, so perfect.
That's why I have it built that way.
And that time I said it would not prohibit you. Because this is, it seems like everybody's looking at it as just you. Where I'm trying to look at it is not prohibiting you, but also just making sure that things are to that point across the board, the same moving forward. So for you, it would not prohibit you saying no livestock or no livestock or outdoor animals?
No, because that's the way I built the building.
Perfect. It would not prohibit you by us asking that you at least hold a USDA certification?
Yes, it could because I run under five different licenses. I run restaurant, I run state, I run tow. There's many, many options to it. You gotta go really deep in the USDA, the state of Minnesota, all the rules and regulations that you go through. I couldn't name them all. You need to be some kind of frickin' scientist, major. Because you have to have, you gotta have it for the sandwiches I make. That's a restaurant, right? So I gotta have state certification for the meat that I cut that already comes in the USDA, right? And then I have to have wild game certification and and stuff that way. So I am regulated by all these other people.
Perfect.
And then USDA, it was just an add-on to it to make it so I can sell anywhere in the US.
Perfect. And and I'm not asking you to, I'm not saying that that has, because I and I understood and I listened to you on the last time. And I understand that that certification may be needed here or there. You're just doing it for your neighbor who's gonna take it home, right? But just holding that certification, so at least that that is there for that part of the business.
So I'm not saying that everything you do has to be USDA certified, saying that you're gonna maintain the certification.
But if I maintain a certification that I have to pay for, that I'm not using. So say that we don't do federal anymore, or you guys stop coming in with federal animals. You don't want them done that way. Then why would I pay for it and the inspections of it if I don't need it when I can? It's the same thing at the state. You know, right now I am custom slaughtering. I can do that under my license, but I don't because I'm not big enough. That's under the state of Minnesota.
Um, would it prohibit you in any way for us to require that no remnants or animal parts be outside? And and I'm maybe wording that wrong.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have stuff that's in in tow and stuff like that. I mean, you're gonna have some stuff like.
And I and I might be wording that wrong.
Nothing is, nothing is, like right now, I mean, since two thousand six, I've had deer hides outside that are all salted, laying flat. Nobody's said one. And I don't have deer bones right now. You know, I did eight hundred animals this last week. Anybody bother anyone?
No.
Just a reminder too, I'm sorry, we do have to have you come to the podium if you're gonna speak.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay, I'm just.
Can I ask one last question? Sorry. You're gonna have to come to the podium, I apologize.
I I apologize. The reason for I apologize is they can't hear over uh, uh, what a TV channel doesn't project as well, I apologize.
Okay.
And I'm asking this not knowing who the number is. So this, I don't know what this number would be. But would it be prohibitive for you if we did say at, and I don't, I think it's silly to be like the same, you know, the more I think about it, I'm saying you have to do this many animals and all of that. Because who's gonna come in and count that, right? Like, that's just resources there. But saying for square footage of a production facility.
No.
You can't have just a square footage. It's hard. Somebody could do twenty a day in their garage. You know, you don't need to have a square footage, you know?
I guess my concern is it's not so much the square footage, but putting or somebody in their garage. It's somebody coming in and putting in, and I understand, Henry, it's not your thing. But putting in a large giant processing five hundred to a thousand animals a day. I'm saying if we're saying like what you're looking to do, would it be prohibitive for it to say a square footage? I don't know what that square footage would be because I don't know what the business plans of anything is.
Depends on how many more smokers I need. Needs uh, more retail area, more more bathrooms for employees, more.
And and I guess, and it could be, I'm not.
I don't know. I don't know that answer because there is some of all the.
And and I don't know what that answer is, but I'm saying like, if you were to look at it with all of that there, what would that number be? And you don't need to know that number now because that would be egregious here. We'd ask for that right now. But I guess that is where I I I just, I do have those.
There's no magic number in any world.
Okay.
It's just like telling a builder he can't build cabinets anymore.
I'm not.
But yeah, he's a really good cabinet builder, but he can't do it in that area. Or you can only do a couple in your square footage area. So I mean, that number is just, I what is it? I don't, I don't know. And that's why I'm asking you, what is that number? Well, I mean, if you do a really good job, why would we want you to expand? Right. And that's where I'm I'm going. Yeah. With everything that I've been doing. And I frankly feel like a big piece of crap because I did this to help my community that I've been in my whole life. Volunteer firefighter for eighteen years. My dad was a full-time firefighter. I stayed this business in this town, raised five kids here, all sports, defended the school, done all that. I wanted to have a good opening for this, for our town, for our local farmers. And I'm treated like god crap. I'm sick to my stomach every day. It's horrible.
I apologize and satisfy how you feel, but.
My dad's, I continued to do things and I understand that, but I was told everything was good to go from city leaders.
Yeah.
And I just won by multiples. And I started this project five years ago. Two years ago, we were all clear, ready to go. And it takes financing, it takes time to plan, and it costs a lot of money.
And you have, you have done an excellent job at this point in time.
I appreciate that. And I paid attention to all the details of not having them outside. That's why I put in what I put in with doors and where they'll be. So the town can't see what's going on because you have to be sensitive too. And that's why I'm doing that.
And that's why.
And it will be, but there is stuff that gets stored outside. It's going to be. You can't have enough room for everything.
That's right.
You clean it as best as you can, you take care of everything you can. There's no waste, big waste or anything like that. The garbage trucks that come by are just like anybody else's garbage truck. It comes by every day. Or the grease traps that are laying out behind the restaurants that smell horrible. Those are way worse than anything else.
So would it be better to say instead of inside contained with no visual? I can't think of a word right now, but like it's contained.
It's gonna be, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a, who are you gonna build a fence around everything that you put out there? I don't know. I don't, I can't answer that. So like the deer hides I take from the hunters, right? I trade them, I pay for them. And they go and have a death for him out of you, right? Some year I could get a thousand, some year I could get ten. Am I supposed to cover each pile or how do you? That's an unpredictable thing. There, nobody knows that's answer. So to be able to put a limitation on it, it's an unknown. And then what happens if we do? Who's gonna regulate it? Are we gonna set up fees and fines and? Where do we go for there? Is it up to the police chief to come up to me and say, that's a thousand bucks you owe me because you didn't cover that? So write a check to the city. You know, where do, where do you go?
I think it's the fire department.
Yep.
I I guess for your, you know, for years Brent has had deer hides back there. Nobody's ever said boo.
Yeah. And and that's, and I understand that. I am just saying for this part of the business. That is where I stand.
My understanding is the five cows or whatever the number is that come in every day or every other day, public ain't gonna see them. They go right into the building.
And and this is where I'm trying to say, I don't think Brent is gonna do a bad job. I have no concerns for him, right? That is not where it is. But I can't predict the future and I don't want us twenty years from now having people come in. Or five years from now, or two months from now, people are complaining about something else. And I think it is our responsibility to look in the future and not just look at one person, but look at it as a, as a long-term what we would like. And if the long-term is to have a lot, a large slaughterhouse come in, then that's our long-term goal.
But the thing is, nobody's asking for a large, long-term, fully large.
No, but you don't, but.
But I also don't want Brent to have a successful business and be limited to just staying in his size. Like, I'm sorry, he's a suc, if he's a successful businessman and his business needs to expand, I feel like we should allow him to do that.
But there's no, there's no room out in industrial park to expand a larger processing of. It would have to be out in.
Some other place.
Out in a coal-borne property, probably.
And and so what if there was five tow cows, ten cows, a hundred cows? It is an industrial park. People aren't living there. People aren't, you you look at all the other businesses out there, the the noises that are made, the sounds that are made, the smells that are made. But we're gonna pick on one, one guy.
Derek, I'm not picking on one guy and I'm not thinking of five, ten or a hundred cows. I'm thinking of a thousand chickens. I'm thinking of a thousand pigs. I'm thinking of a thousand cows.
And it it's an industrial park.
And and if that is the goal of this city and that's what we want, then that is the decision that we make and that's how we base our decisions to make.
I feel like that's the goal of an industrial area is to have successful businesses. Like, why would we be upset that they're expanding and doing well? Like, that's that's the thing that I'm having trouble with.
I have a question, Your Honor. How long have you been in business, Brad, here?
Here in town, including when we were kids doing it out of a garage.
Thirty years.
My whole life. But I've been here in town since two thousand six, when I bought that building.
How many complaints have we heard? As a city?
Zero.
How many complaints have we heard about running his business?
Zero. Zero. Zero.
I'm not concerned about Brent.
Just limit the discussion.
Well, there, you know, the thing that surprised me is this poor guy has gone through a lot of stuff over this time period. Are we gonna start regulating other businesses in town? Where McDonald's can't have so many, can only serve so many burgers? Or the shake shop serves so many shakes a day? That's what we're doing to the guy.
It's similar to what we are doing for the cannabis regulations. If we are creating.
And I think that's silly too.
But but I am just saying, if it is coming in as a new industry, it is our job to decide what we want in the community. It might be ten thousand shakes, it may be a hundred. And I am not saying that. I am saying it is our job to decide what we want as a community, not based off of one specific person, what may or may not happen in the future. And as as new regulations and policies come up and new industries come up, that is where we make that regulations.
I agree with Derek.
It's industrial. I would like to limit discussion on this project right now and move forward.
Move forward with the the motion as it's, as it's written at the next meeting.
Right. Think you dug into this too far.
Just a point to make, I don't, I don't think cannabis can all compare us to discussion of what we're doing here. So I would, I like, I think that if we go down that, I wouldn't do that comparison. I don't think it's fair to be.
No, and and that's what I'm, no, I didn't add in there maybe that.
You know, it's good.
Right.
I am just saying, the industry that we are bringing in and having to build policies for, it is our job.
I I I get what you're saying. There's a lot of studies show that there's a lot negative stuff with cannabis, but not now.
I.
Even though you didn't mean that, but.
Bring it back.
Um, so the question really is, uh, are there gonna be um, any add-ons to this really what? And I think, Derek, you're saying suggesting no.
No add-ons, no.
Right. And so, and I I would maybe quickly get an assessment from the council here to see if add-ons are appropriate or not, and then move on if not.
I I think the ones that were discussed by Darren, I'm I'm not in favor, nor do I support any of them.
I I I think we should just approve the slaughterhouse. I think I I am regretting table again. Because I think, I mean.
I agree.
What the worst case scenario is Brent has a successful business, he has to expand.
Really do.
How does that, how does that hurt us?
It's not the worst case scenario, that.
The, oh, worst case scenario is a giant company wants to come in and build a, like.
This move forward, God.
They have no room to expand.
Exactly.
You've done a good job and I think we should move this to vote.
No, there'd be no vote. This consensus uh, would be voting on it the next council meeting. It's ways and means, there's no vote. It's consensus to move this to
I agree.
the next council meeting.
I agree with it as as it's written.
Yep. I do too.
I totally understand what you're worried about, Morgan. I get it. We're changing the city code. We're changing our comprehensive plan. It's not just a small change. It is a big change, but I also, it's um, it's awesome. It's great. It's gonna be great for Croxton, so.
Yep.
Kudos to you.
Thanks, Wendy. I agree. Thank you.
Yes, we had one more.
Yeah. I Tracy L. Rich, nine one nine Thornhill Avenue. I've known Brent too many years to count. I came here to support him. I know his, see his business. I'm in there. I think, I get what Morgan's saying, but I think this is ridiculous that so what if somebody else comes in? It's going to benefit our community. What we've seen so many times is that people come in and wanna do business here and they get churned out. We need to grow. We need to keep growing. We're not growing. We're getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And if they're worried about a mess with, well, with Brent's, we know it's not gonna happen. I go out there, drop off deer, and I'm like, ew, there's deer, there's blood. It's not horrible. I don't get sick. It's 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 appropriate. It's cleaned up, you know? But I mean, let's support small town. Let's support him. And not, yes, you have to think of the Croxton future, but if you're thinking of this big thousand people company that comes in with all these animals, yay, jobs for us. Who cares? You worried about the smell? We got the beef plant. I grew up hearing, you know, that's the smell of money. So I just came here to support Brent and his family because he does a great job, gives out a great product. I can't wait till we get our deer meat back. And he, and he, like I said, it's always respectful when you go there. So that's just, came to support him.
Very good.
Thank you. Okay, consensus is to move forward to the next council meeting and have a vote on it.
Yes.
And and just clarify, so that would again be the ordinance that was tabled at the last council meeting to allow slaughterhouses and牲畜 plants as a permitted use?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And this will be on the next regular agenda. All right, second one is Empowering Small Minnesota Communities and Comprehensive Plan Draft Presentation. Mary.
Mary first, I think.
You had Mary and Shannon and Tori and.
I've been working with Mary a couple of years. Hey, thank you guys for for that, just supporting Croxton and the great discussion. And thank you to our community members for coming out. We're gonna talk about a project we've been working on called Empowering Small Minnesota Communities. We received a grant, or we're talking a lot about downtown today, talking about uh, different community meetings that we've had that have developed um, some items we wanna put in front of you. We've been working with Joel to put together our comprehensive plan. And so it's been about a year and a half, almost two years of hard work. And so it's hard to follow that with an upbeat message. So I hope we could just kinda remember how much we all love Croxton and hang with this. So, good evening, Mayor Council. Before we begin tonight's presentation, I'm gonna briefly introduce some of our partners who've been instrumental in the work and engaged since February twenty twenty four through Empowering Small Minnesota Communities Initiative. As you know, Croxton was selected as a pilot community for this project partnership between the University of Minnesota Design Center and the Regional Sustainable Development Partnership. Tonight, you'll be hearing the results of that effort. I also wanna just thank Representative Erin Hegel, who may be watching us tonight. She was the one who kinda championed this. And the whole goal is to help small communities who can't afford architects, engineers, grant writers and all that to to give us the finances through the state to help small communities fund projects that they normally can't fund themselves. After receiving the news that Croxton was, that we rewarded the project, we went to work. We had, many of you attended the library, the I Love Croxton in February twenty twenty four, was hosted at the library. We had over a hundred residents. It was a lot of fun. And a big map was on the floor and people pointed out what they love about Croxton. We just started the Jolt and Jive Coffee Group. We've been meeting every Thursday for about a year and a half now, maybe almost two years. Uh, eight o'clock in the morning, we've moved from the Cove over across to the uh, the uh, the Nest. And a lot of great ideas have been coming out of that. We've had Wednesdays on the water. Our first kayak event was over seventy people. And we've had the second one was kayaking and that Pokemon Go activity. Uh, we've been growing Bob's ponds. We've been partnering with kids, with Fred over kids, get kids outdoor to play. We had an active transportation community workshop. We had probably seventy residents eating a bunch of root beer floats. And we pointed out the trail maps. And I really wanna thank the council members who showed up for these things because it it means a lot to people who are working in our community that that you're there and you support us. Uh, community engagement, we had night to night. We've had the meet candidates last time for at the UMC. And then we have our weekly Monday morning coordinations. They're held every week to align the efforts of the RSDP, Minnesota Design Center, Croxton Housing and Economic Development, the City of Croxton, and the KLJ Engineering. Uh, Joel's gonna be with us tonight. He began updating the two thousand sixteen comp plan, which he is the one who, archi- archi- the architecture plan? Is that the right word I'm saying? Joel did our two thousand sixteen plan and many of you were in those meetings. And uh, we're working now to wind that up and get final say so on that from you. And then we'll move forward with that. Uh, first, I wanna say Mary Vogel. She's a senior research fellow at the Minnesota Design Center. Formerly served as a director of both the Center of Changing Landscapes and the Rural Sustainable Development Partnership. Through her career, Mary has championed the use of design, thinking, and deep community engagement. It helped rural rural communities, excuse me, imagine their future, navigate change. Her leadership and vision has helped to guide this entire process through. Mary also is very instrumental in helping us get down there, trying to get some finances for MINDOT projects. So I, Mary has been around a lot of years and she has a lot of good friends and she is, uses her influence wisely. Today, next we've got Dr. Tori Aaron. Tori's a research fellow with the Minnesota Design Center. Leads multiple rural community projects with the Empowering Small Minnesota Communities Program. With a background in landscape architecture, she also brings systems-oriented approach to to design thinking, ecological resilience, and meaningful community engagement. Tori's also an award-winning social practice artist, filmmaker, writer, and ONSDAS scholar, and teaches both architecture and landscape architecture at the University of Minnesota in St. Paul. Her creativity and clarity in translating community input into visual possibilities have been invaluable on this project. And you'll see some of that. Next, we have Shannon Stassen. Shannon serves as executive director with Northwest Regional Development Partnership. She works closely with local governments, nonprofits, foundations, and regional partnerships throughout Northwest Minnesota. Shannon has played a key role in the, in bringing the Empowering Small Minnesota Communities into our region, serving as the connector, conveyor, and champion for communities like Croxton. His commitment to strengthening rural policies and ensuring that the local voices shape local solutions has been essential to move this work forward. Also joining us tonight is Joel Quanbeck. He'll be our second presenter. Joel serves as the community planning team manager at KLJ Engineering and brings more than thirty years of professional planning experience. He's a certified planner for the American Planning Association and provides leadership, strategic communication, and guidance in the development of sustainable community infrastructure. Joel authored the Croxton's two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan and has been leading the update since late twenty twenty three. Uh, when I came on here, I got with Corky and we realized we needed to update our plan because we were out of date. And so we've been working on this for over two years. So this is not a new thing that's happened and has nothing to do with the meeting we just had. This has to do with something we've been working on. This current update is being completed in partnership with the Empowering Small Minnesota Communities Project. And please welcome me to Joe, to uh, please welcome Mary Vogel, Tori Aaron, Shannon Stassen, and Joel Quanbeck. And I will sit down. Mary, here.
Thank you. Well, we're certainly glad to be here today to present our work. We've had really a lot of, a lot of fun working in Croxton. And we're very, very pleased with our partners. We're part of a program called Empowering Small Minnesota Communities, which is funded by the nineteen twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three legislature. It was led by Erin Colgate with the, um, and the the transportation chairs of the, of the, um, of the House and of the Senate. It's based on creating collaborations between the university and small, um, small communities to help small communities move forward with their aspirations. Our work has been directed to be infrastructure center, recognizing that when, particularly when state agencies are working with communities, they sometimes are a little toned down. Yes. Um, and we wanna have state programs that are responsive to communities. So what we do is we create strategic efforts to move communities forward over time. We're not saying you should do this tomorrow. We're saying this is the big picture. This is the kind of direction that you could choose to go to. We also really focus on connecting existing assets and and addressing existing challenges. Oftentimes, we find that communities don't even recognize all the ten, all the, um, all the assets they have. And sometimes they're really too focused on their challenges to see all the positive things that can happen in their community. We also see our work as creating more value for public and private investments. And we also see our work as a tool that, that communities can use to apply for funding. We, we do drawings and suggestions and, and, and collect data that all can be used to, to, on, on grant preparations. We know that, we don't know any community in Minnesota that isn't facing financial challenges, but we also know there are a number of grants that are available. And, and so we want to work with communities to create tools so they can move forward. We've had, we have a wonderful team. Tori and I are basic ones from the Design Center, but we receive support from students who supported our work. Shannon has been a valuable partner. He knows a lot about this community and how to work with community, and we're grateful for the kind of partnership we've had with him. And we're very impressed with your staff. Carrie is outstanding. And her new assistant, Taylor, seems to be really a right-on young woman and has a very bright future, and we appreciate the kind of perspective a younger professional can, can give. Sometimes we're almost full of old people, and we need to know more about what young people think. And we were very pleased to work with Joel. Joel has been a terrific partner and has really strengthened our work, and we hope our work has strengthened his. So Kirkston is very lucky to have such a strong team. Shannon has been the one who's really leading our, our outreach. Carrie just described some of us, but I, I think, can we have a slide showing? Shannon may want to make some comments. You can see how many people have been involved. I'm sure some of you recognize the names.
Well, I'll, I'll be brief, but it's, it's been, it's been a lot of fun to continue engagement and advancing some plans from, from years ago and, and realizing along the line that a lot of things have been accomplished, which is fun to, to look at, see. But there's also things that have kind of been left behind that people have had dreams and aspirations for. That really came out in that initial engagement at the library, where we had the big map on the floor. Kids were crawling around their hands and knees. You could walk out on there and, and place your ideas on the map. That, that was a great kickstart to the whole event. And followed up with that with a, a number of, of smaller engagements. Mary actually started off the whole program with saying, hey, just, I want to meet people. So I took her on and met a whole bunch of people over the course of a couple of days. Yeah, that's the, the picture of the, the big map on the floor and stuff, which kind of informed our, you know, the work for the next year and a half of, of hearing from people from, you know, city government, the school, all the nonprofits, the downtown development partnership, all of those folks. And some of you were part of those meetings, whether it be lunch or coffee, that sort of thing. It led to the Active Living Meeting that happened at the Cove here, not this June, but I guess about a year and a half ago. We had a great turnout and with people saying, hey, these, these are the things we want to see. These are the amenities we want to see and we want to continue forward with. And then Carrie mentioned the Thursday morning coffee meetings and, and other engagement pieces that have just kind of kept us on track. We've been able to kind of take ideas that we've had and bring them to that group and, and, you know, modify them or, and a lot of times validating that we're on the right track, which has been really helpful. So, yeah, just thank you to everybody that's contributed, and I'm going to turn it over so we can get down to the main details of this.
Yeah, right, okay. I, I said that we were, I'd asked if I'd focused, and that oftentimes communities don't recognize all the assets that they do have. I'm not going to go through this list. You'll all have an opportunity to, to do this, but the three major categories that we found were environmental assets. Of course, we start, of course, with the river and your parks. And we also recognize that you have a rather substantial built environment, many historic buildings and other, other aspects. You've, you've also had art murals, a medical center, et cetera, et cetera. And also, you have terrific people assets. You've had a number of initiatives that have been started by individuals, and we recognize that. We all, you also have a number of committees that are involved. We also then looked at what are your challenges? And we recognize that Kirkston is sort of disconnected. You have many parts, but they don't really interact and create synergies that they could. You also have issues with flooding, and you're, you're having the challenge of having a major infrastructure project, which will impact your downtown in the, in the next few years, and lots of other kinds of things. We also recognize that there are issues that are based on how, how the environment interacts with people. There are some safety issues downtown. There are some questions about, do you really have access to Red Lake River? And of course, you have downtown vacancies and some buildings that are in, in, in disrepair. Today, what we are working on is, yeah, identifying what we've learned from Kirkston.
So we, we thought it was really interesting to look at the downtown master plan and community engagement, along with the community engagement that we, efforts that we have done with Empowering Small Minnesota Communities. And some of the things that highlighted, were highlighted for us and informed some of our planning was what was important to folks about Kirkston, and that was really public-focused. You're focused on family, community, walking, biking, and people. And what would you like to see downtown Kirkston is focused on specialty businesses and shopping and family-friendly events. What do you like about downtown Kirkston? Historic, historic buildings, green spaces, and then biking, biking and walking. Dislikes include lack of businesses and high traffic, car dependency, and no family and youth activities, or lack of family and youth activities. Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you. Did we receive an electronic version of this?
We can certainly send it to you.
Just, you know, I'm, and maybe it's my eyes, but I can see wonderful parts here, but I can't see any of the text.
Sure, sure.
So it would be helpful, I know that you practice this, but to point out if there's something you want to accentuate and to point that out, because I can't read the text.
Yeah, absolutely. It's hard to tell what the screen is going to look like when you enter the space, but we can send it along. So this, this all informed our strategy for looking at Kirkston as a whole and developing kind of a system-wide plan. Can you go to the next slide?
So then we looked at what are the opportunities based on the assets and the challenges that were, and the impact that we get, input that we got from the community. The first one was to identify and redefine and connect assets. That means building on the existing access, partnering with strong economic development strat. We're lucky you have Carrie. And impact some of the current initiatives that you're having, which include the, of course, the Highway Two project, the comprehensive plan revision, and the Active Living Initiative that you had. So we didn't, we wanted to be connected to what we're already doing and work together with them. And we also wanted to build on the historic paths and the recreational initiatives that you have. We also wanted to identify, redefine, and reposition historical assets. We build upon, we want to build upon historic landscapes. You have quite a group of historic landscapes in the city that aren't even visible to the community. We had to go and look at MINDOT to find out where they were. A lot of them were either industrial or related to the railroad. And we, we wanted to connect Kirkston history of the environment and its development and link the historic resources to the building efforts. You've done a really good job of identifying and celebrating some of your, a lot of your historic buildings, but also some people see the historic buildings are a problem because some of them really need some help. But we also wanted to develop historic landscapes and civic spaces in some of these newly identified or revised spaces. And we also want to celebrate Kirkston as a crucial part of the United States' history because Kirkston was the place where James Dean Hill lost out in his competition to corner the Canadian market and decided to go west. And he looked west at Kirkston. And that's not even mentioned or acknowledged when you talk to people about the historic of Kirkston. Kirkston was a big deal. It made a big difference in the history of this country, just like the Erie Canal made a big difference in the eastern United States. Kirkston was part of making a big deal of western United States. We also want to connect and expand the existing trail system. You have fragments that are nice, but they could be much more if they were connected. Of course, we want them to be accessible and have, and be safe. And we want to extend trails to the historic landscape so that when you are going through Kirkston on your trail, you are also learning about Kirkston and celebrating Kirkston's history. And we want to create a strong connection to downtown. We talked to the MINDOT person that was doing your Active Living and said, what is your connection to the Highway Two project? And she said, there is no connection, and we don't want one. So then I talked to MINDOT and said, what is the connection between your work downtown and Active Living? And he said, there is no connection, and we, we don't want that connection. Well, we want people to get to downtown. And if we're, if Kirkston is positioning itself to be in an Active Living town, people should be able to get to downtown. So we're changing, so we, we have that as an emphasis. And of course, we want to address pedestrian safety or use of safety. It isn't just pedestrians we're talking about with the trail system. We're talking, we're talking about cross-country skiing. We're talking about biking. We're talking about a range of Active Living kinds of things. And the fourth thing is, is to create a 21st century downtown. And we didn't want to duplicate you. We saw, we appreciated the work that has been done to promote downtown, and we're delighted to see your video tonight. We didn't, we didn't focus on shopping because others were doing that. We looked at how can we make Kirkston a place to live, work, and have fun? And like all the others, we wanted to exist, we wanted to connect existing assets and planned access. And we wanted to really redefine Kirkston as people-centered and walkable, while at the same time providing parking and access for cars. We know we're, we're a car-centered community. Right now, whenever I walk down Main Street or Broadway, I'm scared. It's, it's, it's a daunting, it's, it's not, there isn't a downtown feel. There's a highway feel. So how do you change that? We're, we're going to have Highway Two going through downtown, but we need to modify it so, so it is more in pedestrian scale. And we also want to emphasize Kirkston. Go ahead.
When we had those open houses and community input regarding our corridor with MINDOT, is, wasn't the, the main focus, wasn't it on traffic calming? You know, that's why we are incorporating the bumpouts at intersections and bike lane.
Yeah, and you're scaling it more. You see, it's scaled right now to highway scale, and you're trying to scale it to pedestrians. Part of that are the trees, the bumpouts. There isn't, there is an effort. But what we're looking at is looking at Second Street as a people-centered place. The people, sort of Second Street as the tree, and then the branches, that have, that have branches. Branches to shopping, branches to your farmer's market, branches to your swimming pool and your library, and really package all that from, from, from Red Lake River to Red Lake River and make, and make that a piece. And we also want to make the depot site a place that celebrates Kirkston's place in the development of northwestern country with the James Dean Hill efforts to connect, connect Kirkston and the rest of the country west. Anyway, I'm diverting here. So what, so we, the two big ideas are the connector, we're calling the connector, we're not calling it a trail system because it's more than a trail system. It's, it's a movement system that moves, that, that people can use to access neighborhoods and downtown. And I wanted to go through some of the aspects of, of, of the connector. The connector is one idea, and we'll, we'll present the other idea secondly, but let's, let's talk about the connector first.
So some of our strategy is supported by background research, and Carrie sent along some resources from the Center for Rural Policy and Development. And our colleague Kelly Ash has done some research on looking at rural communities and populations, and that we're actually at a people shortage. We have labor in rural communities, but we don't have people to work the jobs. So how do you, how do you engage in making places, places for people, people that, how, how do you engage people in wanting to move somewhere? And so one of, one of their elements in their research is looking at developing natural assets in public space. And so that's where Mary and I come in, and some of the strategies involve both improving ecological health and flood resilience, and then developing landscape sites that recognize Kirkston's rich history, and then also looking at how do we connect these community assets? Next slide. So we, we do some research in science and data as well, looking at heat island areas. And your downtown has a little bit of a heat island area just because of the lack of tree canopy. If you can go to the next slide. We're also looking at flooding and flood mitigation. Central Park is within the flood plain, and there are ways to develop landscape spaces and sites, and so that you can be adaptive to flood plain measures with different landscape vegetation types. Next slide. And then we're also looking at tree canopy. I know you mentioned Emerald Ashport in your city council meeting. That is an issue that is coming to northern Minnesota, not already slightly here. And then the tree canopy and lack of tree canopy downtown. So we're looking at vegetation as both a strategy for beauty, vegetation, wind barriers, and then also habitat, but can mitigate heat island effect as well. Next slide. We looked at your existing parks and trails, and as Mary had mentioned before, you have many parks and trails. You have this wonderful Red Lake River, which is your main asset of your community, and parks and trails along it, the golf course, the sports center, but they're all separate. There is not one way to link all of these places together. Next slide. So as Mary mentioned, we're looking at these two bigger strategies, the connector and the corridor. We looked at MINDOT's recommended bike routes to inform some of our strategies and designs so that we can collaborate with them on future projects. Next slide. And then, sorry, the text is a little small. I promise we will send you the slides, but Kirkston's historic landscapes, including the historic depot site, Market, the historic sawmill, the powerhouse, and other landscape sites that we could start to integrate that story to, to tell Kirkston's history through public space. So not only looking at downtown and wayfinding strategies and narratives, but also how do you integrate the landscape and Kirkston's history into this story as well? So the connector, our proposed routes include looking at both Kirkston planned trails that you all as, as a city have, have come up with or have generated through planning processes, but then also how do we create connections and really amplify it? And as we mentioned before, this is really the ten, twenty thousand, thirty thousand foot scope at what you would look like to your future. So you're really thinking about your children, your grandchildren, when developing this plan, and these would be done in increments over time. We then looked at how our plan integrates with MINDOT's recommended bike routes, which We then looked at how our plan integrates with Mindat's recommended bike routes, which is represented in purple here. And all of the park and trail systems not only connect to your community assets that you already have, but also start to amplify them by developing like equine trails and improving some of the cross-country ski areas, and then making connections, connections to some of the rich community assets that you have, like Bob's Pond and the sports center, the high school, and of course, connecting up to UNC. Oh, sorry, can you go back? Thank you. This great, these green areas represent city-owned parcels that we looked into for future potential development for some of those park spaces, especially looking at the map that I recently showed, looking at flood plain and some of the data, the FEMA data, so that any site development along the river that's in that flood plain could potentially become park, park space. And then, sorry, can you go back? And then some of the trail systems then again emphasize some of those historic landscape sites as well. Okay, next slide.
I'm sorry, do you know the distance between, if you go back one slide?
Sure.
And then Oxbow there, it's almost constricting on itself, the distance across the river there?
This here?
What, what distance are we talking there?
Um, let's see, so this is...
Just the narrowest part?
Yeah, I think this is one mile, so... Yeah, I think it's like a quarter mile.
That's like the Robert Street Bridge, basically.
Yeah. I don't have that info at this time. Yeah. And then another thing that we wanted to emphasize is, what we'll talk about soon, is the, the corridor. Looking at that east, east-west connection from the river to the river. Next slide. Which is the corridor. So looking at Second Street as a place that had already is populated with community, rich community assets, and then creates a connection from Central Park and then all the way to the other side of the river across the railroad tracks. Next slide. We analyzed some of the green space and some parking and potential parking opportunities. Again, looking at Mindat Highway Two as sort of the dominant element in your community. In Mindat's proposal, they want to maintain two of the stoplights on Robert Street and then remove the two stoplights that are on Second Street. And just in our analysis of wanting to make downtown a people-centered place, MDC doesn't recommend that necessarily. We would like you all to consider keeping it and advocating for keeping those stoplights.
We've been told that we are not allowed to.
There is a way. I promise you, I, I, I work with a community in West St. Paul, and the amount of advocacy that we have done with the community has been incredible to the point where we have a Mindat Accountability Task Force, including the council, City of St. Paul, Mindat, myself, and my other colleagues at MDC, community members. And it, it does seem like this big immovable force, right? Mindat does, but I promise you that there are ways that we can develop strategies to work, work with them in a way that's best for, for your communities, and I'm really happy to share that information with you at future dates.
Yeah, let me just, yeah. We, we've done this before. The work that I did, not, not when I worked with Minnesota Design Center, but when I had my own Design Center, we changed the whole alignment of the LRT line in Minneapolis and St. Paul. And we did it through drawings. We didn't, Tori is talking about a project which really is driven by organizing communities. We changed the alignment of the LRT line by drawings and convincing Mindat that it was a good idea. So they're, they're not as close-minded as sometimes they feel, they appear. And we're not promising you everything, but we are saying that we both had experience of helping Mindat consider other options. And we think that's important if it's important to you. If it's not important to you, we won't be your advocates, but if it's important to you, we, we want to help.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, yeah, we, just going back to some of the drawings, again, I wasn't aware that they would be this quality on the screen, but the MDC connector circulation, looking at that corridor on Second Street, and then identifying some of your historic buildings, and also some of your key assets, like the public library, the Grand Theater, City Hall, of course, the Cove, just to name a few. Of course, we, there are many more. And then developing this downtown, downtown strategy for the corridor. Next slide. So the corridor, which Second Street is here, is a movement design. Looking at the connector, which is outlined in red here, the historic depot site, and a railroad bridge that actually has stairs that go up so that you can overlook the river. It includes vegetation on, in the center of the street. There would be reduced, there would be traffic, but reduced speeds, so 10 miles below, and parking on the north side of the street with limitations for events and public, yeah, public use such as farmer's markets. This is becoming more and more popular in different communities that you have a people-centered place, and we're happy to show you some precedent images if we want to talk about it further. There would be a focused gathering site, which I'll go into detail a little bit at the old Palace Hotel site, and then the bike path connecting to, down to Central Park. And then just pointing out those MDC recommended stoplights as well. Next slide. This is a closer look at the corridor and the gathering space. So just a little bit of background about the Palace Hotel, and it has been closed since 2010. It's now a parking lot, but we saw it as a really great opportunity to create a public gathering space that's both seasonal for summer and winter. So we have this kind of circular or oval kind of shape that has grass in the summertime, a splash pad on one part of it, and then in the wintertime, it transforms into an ice skating rink with a band shelf for music events such as Tuesday tunes. And then there would be public seating areas such as benches and then access to the alleyway. Next slide. These are some renderings, just representing what that might look like from the ground level. Again, you have one amazing mural downtown already, but can we amplify your murals and public art events and gathering sites? And then, of course, looking back to your, your survey results and how folks wanted youth and family activities downtown as well. Next slide. This is a look at what that corridor might look like, so looking west on a day that maybe the street is closed for a public event such as the farmer's market with tree, tree vegetation, the corridor being used, and then public family events. And I think we'll stop there. We have plenty more research and drawings to share, but we wanted to offer the space for any questions before moving on to Joel's presentation, and then following that, we'd have a discussion about it.
It's such a different beast, the wintertime versus the summertime. And a lot of this seems really great. I mean, it's great that you're here to help out and thinking and not telling us what to do, saying, what are you thinking if you buy, and we'll help you facilitate whatever your aspirations could be. So it's very kind and gentle way to present. I get stuck on the winter aspect of it because it just gets brutally cold sometimes.
Yeah, well, it does get brutally cold, but you also have a terrific tradition of skating.
We have indoor races.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand that.
But you're suggesting outdoor. Is there, besides that?
Yeah, a splash pad in the summertime and a, and a skating rink. Yeah, not, it, it won't be attractive every, every day of the winter here in Crookston. We understand that. But I think there are, and, and there are ways of also of connecting with things, like you could program some of the films that are shown.
So I was leading to my questions, my, so my...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So in your, your skills, your, your now analytical skills, when you're looking at us and you look at all these different communities, even in Twin Cities area, you bring in a rich, rich history here, what do you see that we're missing?
You need to connect your assets. You, you need...
So we have, we're not missing any assets, is what you're saying?
You have, you, you need to identify some of your assets, and you need to connect the assets. I think that Crookston has been too challenge-focused, and we understand that there are challenges here, but you also have lots of strength. And, and, and you have a lot, both physically, and you have people who have made commitments to the community that have made, that are willing to work to improve the community. And you can do it, I guess is what we're saying, because you have these assets.
So, so just thinking broadly, so when I think of busy cities, we're not a busy city, but we like to be a busy city, is that you go to one huge city, right? So they have, you know, you can walk across the street, you can walk under the street. You get, you go under, underneath the street, and you have vibrant economies on both sides, but you don't want to cross the street because it's dangerous. And then what other small cities have done in larger cities is they have locks across, right? You build a hallway across the street. Have you thought about that at all in your, in your discussions with us?
Well, we, they're very expensive.
Yes, they are.
For, for one thing, we think the first move is to really start bringing people downtown with a focus on Second Street. And as the interest and use of downtown builds, then there are opportunities to, to consider more expensive changes. We, the, the, the bridge over the railroad is, is one expensive connection that we were suggesting. But we thought that there would potentially be funding opportunities if you celebrated James J. Hill and his vision, you know, for, for developing the west so that you could get some historic, historic grants to help you with the cost of that. You know, we're trying to think strategically because things are expensive. And I think the other thing that we have focused on is that oftentimes, communities, I'm an architect, think, people think about buildings, and buildings are really expensive, and they're not thinking enough about what they already have. And Crookston did that when they started thinking about history. They focused on buildings and, oh, they're expensive to maintain and we have problems, but they didn't think about their historic landscape that is right at their feet. It could be celebrated much cheaper than putting on a new roof or putting in a new heating system, if you understand what I'm saying. So there are different scales of strategies that can be used to move, to move communities forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a big fan of James J. Hill. I got, I got married at the James J. Hill Library, big fan. But we also have an Andrew Carnegie Library here. Is there anything that, like, we could be trying to...
Well, some communities have found, you know, people, more people are, are telecommuting, and people are feeling isolated. And in some communities, I think, is it, is it the Michigan has the shared? The library seems to be a good source for shared office. So the people who have jobs that telecommute can come in a couple days a week and be with people. You know, that, that's one potential kind of use for that space, Henry. It's not the only one, but it's one that would probably cost less than other things that might require expensive renovation to meet licensing requirements and, you know, public safety requirements and other things like that. So trying to figure out what you've got and what could fit is really the sort of the, the whole point of this. And when we talk about the corridor, that what we're trying to do is get you people to think differently about downtown and not look, think of it as a busy highway, but as a tree of amenities that people can feel safe on because they're walking on, and they're using Second Street. And the Second Street is still open for, for traffic, but the traffic is slower. And when you have a special event, you can close off Second Street between Main Street and Broadway and have your special event. And you're, so you're not impacting the people that have businesses on that street who would be upset if you took the parking and took the traffic away from it. So we're trying to see what could work. You know, and it doesn't make any sense to block off the street if you just have events periodically, but you can block it off when you have your event. So you're, we're trying to have your cake and eat it too, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I, I would be 100% okay with, like, turning Main Street from Second almost down to Super Value into like a walking corridor, like behind all the businesses is parking. That's all it is. It's just gravel parking behind there. And if you could turn that whole thing into just like, like a town square, I think that would be even better than just focusing on H Street. Do the two-way on Broadway because that's the corridor that everybody wants to go down, and turn Main from Second to Sixth into a city square.
That sounds like a good idea. I won't prove that, I'll, I'll argue another suggestion. And that is, one of the things that we're interested in having the council consider is, what, what are you going to do to keep these businesses? You've got this wonderful video now promoting this. What are you going to do to keep these businesses alive? And one of the things you need to do, we think, is to take a, a strategy in which people can enter businesses from the alley, from the street. Now, the street that runs parallel to, what's the name of the street again?
Market.
Market Street. You could have new entrances to the, to the businesses. You have murals. And we, we plan parking along Market Street. So you park on Market Street and you go shopping. Or you walk down the corridor to, to the businesses that are on, on Broadway. So thinking, and you don't have very many restaurants downtown, but sometimes, like during COVID in Stillwater, some of the, some of the restaurants expanded their spaces into the, on the sidewalks on the street or on the alley. And after COVID, they're keeping them because people like them. Now they're, now they're, they don't do that in the middle of the winter, but it does help bring people downtown when the, when the weather is nice. And it's using existing spaces without big investments. The restaurants had to buy new furniture. That's all they had to do in order to provide more space for, for businesses. And I'm not saying that it, it, that it's, that kind of strategy is limited to, to restaurants. I'm using restaurants as an example.
Well, I feel like that would just be like a good thing for restaurants to build in downtown Crookston if we had like a town square where people could just like walk in.
Yeah, well, that's...
Because like right now, we're blow-through downtown. It's, you're not stopped.
Yeah.
We're trying to create the town square.
There's not...
We're trying to create the, the characteristics of a town square on Second Street is what we're trying to do right now. Because you have the space, the, the old hotel space. You have the opportunity of closing it off periodically if you want to. And it's also designed so that even when you have traffic, the traffic is slower, and, and people can still access those, those businesses. We're concerned that, that we don't want to negatively impact the businesses. So we're trying to balance all these things. And, and I, I don't think you're going to be able to convince Mindat to make Broadway a two-way highway.
That was...
But we can convince them to change that.
That was...
You know, so we're trying to, we're, we're working within, well, what is...
So we, we can convince them one thing, we can't convince them, yeah.
No, we had, I gotta step in here. We had final design. We had residents come in and their... We had residents come in and there wasn't very many stickers on the map to whether you want to keep it three lane, go two lane, have Broadway, two-way traffic, Main would have been the main Highway Two corridor coming in out of Crookston. Everybody wanted two lane on both Main and Broadway. So I mentioned Mindat afterwards because that's the direction they were going. I told Mindat, you got all the power to make Crookston, take back Broadway. Because I think two-way traffic on Broadway would have been great. But there were, where you put these stickers, there was two people that put stickers on Broadway being two-way traffic. City owns it again. And it was me and someone else. But everybody wanted three lane or two lane, two lane was the winner.
I feel like we were just told that we can make Mindat change their mind.
For stoplights, not, not design. They're too far into it now.
That's true.
Yeah, you can't change it. But you know, what I was upset about, I'm getting on my high horse here, is where were the 30 and 40-year-olds at this open house to see what kind of downtown they wanted? And it was all us, ones that are going to be dead in 50 years.
All of us moved away.
I mean, there was no younger people input in what they wanted their downtown to be. And it was disappointing.
I'm going to ask if we could slide on just to get Joel's presentation in and then come back to this at the end for those who.
I think that sounds really good because we have.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your attention. And thank you for the thankless job that you do serving your community. I've been doing the role that I have here for about 35 years. I work mostly with local governments and smaller communities. And I see the same thing over and over again. People wearing tons of hats because they see something needs to be done and they step up. But there comes a point in time where, as was just mentioned, we need some more people to step up. What I hope is that as a part of the process that you've just been hearing about and this new comprehensive plan, there might be a glimmer of hope and interest that pulls more people to step up. But as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, the challenge is always getting people here to help present their perspectives. What I'd like to do as quickly as I can, because I remember, well, my tummy is starting to tell me that I remember what time of the day it is, that we, we have a project, the comprehensive plan update, and I just want to run through the primary content for it and make some occasional connections to the work that you've just seen presented. So you see, first of all, something that should say draft on it. Just every single slide, you should see it, you're not seeing it, but it'll say draft. In your minds, make sure you see draft. Because this is for you guys to have some input on. Tomorrow night, we go to the planning commission and we get to talk specifically about magics. And the title itself is something that's, I'm juggling several balls on. I've reached out to this team that we've seen talk and to others and said, you know, what would make sense for Crookston? And I've got probably half dozen to dozen different potential titles and taglines that might be great for helping create this sense of, yes, Crookston has life, Crookston has a future. One of the terms that keeps coming up for me is the term activate. As has been pointed out, there are a ton of assets in your community. Did you know that you have more workers commuting into Crookston than commute into East Grand Forks? That's cool. When I saw that statistic, I was going, we're not dead. We have all kinds of opportunity because we have a primary sector that really has life. And you have some great long-term people in your industrial park or businesses. Sorry, I'm going to have a really tough time trying to do what I said I'd do, which is a minute per slide. So what I'd like to do is just again, reach out and say that this team that I've been able to collaborate with has been really helpful to take the original scope of the comprehensive plan and expand it greatly. A comprehensive plan needs to serve, next slide please, some critical functions for a community. Number one, it's really helpful to help defend your zoning ordinance. Because if there's consistency and you based the plan, or rather place, based the zoning ordinance on the plan, when you end up in court, which sometimes happens, you have a lot stronger basis for it. But beyond that, you also have the opportunity to, what I've just been talking about, set a vision for your community, with your community, for your community. And then finally, you know, Kerry knows where the money is and, and has done a great job at tapping some of that money. But you need plans to help say, this is why we deserve the money. So those are the three main things I just want to point out to you about the purpose of the comprehensive plan. We could spend days on that kind of thing. I sent you, or rather, I think Kerry distributed to you some materials from the Department of, no, from the, from Minnesota League of Cities, I think. And so I'm not going to go into any details about that kind of stuff right now related to statutes and so on. Your earlier discussion about the slaughterhouse just made me want to start chipping in on things that I could share with you, but another day. So I want to make one other starting point. This, a comprehensive plan is intended to be a long-range planning document. It is not something that's a strategic plan. I'm just finishing a strategic plan for the city of Elendale right now. And it's ideas to implement everything in three years. You may not complete everything in 20 years that might be proposed in your comprehensive plan. What you should be doing is reviewing it and updating it, as Kerry and the former city administrator were thinking about doing every, you know, much more periodically than that. Whatever you do, recognize that you start small and build on success. So pick some things that you can win at and then keep going. Next slide, please. Not going to talk about this at all, except to say, here's a bunch of different ways. It's not just zoning and subdivision regulations that you can help use to implement your plan. Next slide.
That's very good. About four to five seconds on that slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, backup. What I'm doing, previous backup, please. Thank you. I'm listing zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, capital improvements planning, building codes, policies, city policies, financial and other incentives, public education and historic preservation. Those are all tools that you have available to you to help implement a comprehensive plan. You need to be conscious about doing that, but there are tools that are out there available in small cities in Minnesota.
I just wanted to point out, you said there was a slide, I'm not going to talk about it. And there's some data, and usually your presentation, you have a slide, but you're not going to talk about the slide. So I'm calling you on it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next slide. Existing conditions, I'm just highlighting a couple of things about your population here. The slide on the right is showing you the pattern since 1900 for your population in the decennial census. And it's been this slow, you know, gradual decline in the last several decades. On the left-hand side, what you see is a population pyramid, showing you in five-year increments, the ages of your city. And what you should pay attention to in particular, since the older people are on top, I'm right in this bracket right in here. All of us baby boomers are getting older and hopefully we can hand the reins over to younger people one day. But what you have in right in here is this large, not bubble, but group of people that are right in the family formation years. What this tells me is that you as a community have the basis for basically continuing your population stability. And even though there might be an institution out there that's projecting decline, I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that bad. I think that you should be expecting and you should be thinking about maintaining stability for growth. Next slide. So Tori spent some time talking about the downtown and talking about parks and assets in your community. I want to just point out that, that these are existing assets that you can build on. There are more opportunities out there. We could brainstorm, I think just the four or five of us could brainstorm for a whole day just about other things and that kind of slowed down our conversations some Monday mornings. Next slide. One of the big things that your comprehensive plan has is a future land use component. This is your existing land use, the different colors represent everything from industrial, commercial, vacant to agricultural park and industrial land. On the right-hand side, what you see is just vacant land. In the end, remember I said draft? This will also identify all the city-owned land outside city limits because those are part of your assets. And when we think, next slide, please, about your future land use. This is a proposed future land use map that shows by color, purple being industrial, red being commercial. This green and these yellow are primarily focused on residential. The whole idea is that where are your opportunities for growth? What do you think is the best use of land in this particular part of your city or close to the edge of your city? And this is not very different from the 2016 comprehensive plan, but we have added a little bit more to it. Specifically, we've added a potential future residential down here, some industrial up here, commercial here. And I don't know that this was here before, even though it's pretty much inactive use.
And U-Town will be discussing that tomorrow night at the planning meeting if they want to join us.
Yes, echoing tomorrow night, we will talk about the future land use map in more detail and, and opportunities. I, I have a slide here just about the downtown. We probably should not talk about that because of time, but I think you have a great opportunity. I want to just make two points about it. Number one, there are a lot of communities that interstate highways bypassed. And that traffic reduction has a permanent impact on their downtown. You have a different kind of impact. You've got traffic that's still going through your downtown. And even though there might be different ways that this reconstruction of the downtown Highway Two corridor could have happened, that what will happen will be a good starting spot for allowing more activation of your downtown. Because it should have some benefit to the, to the traffic speed. There's psychological reasons behind that and so on. But bottom line on it is, I think that there's a good start here that you should build on. And, and then the, the, the activation of businesses, the use of the existing spaces is just a couple more things that are, are a big part of what I think you can accomplish over time. Start small and build on success. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, backup again, I want to make sure I didn't. Yes, I want to talk about transportation. If you were to look closely at this because it was in front of you, but you did get the, this got sent out, right? This presentation got sent out to you. So red color means the highest volumes of traffic. This is also a draft because I haven't verified that all of the different color tones are accurate based on the volumes that we're showing. But generally speaking, I'm not seeing a whole lot of change from the 2016 planning in the volumes of traffic that are there. Your downtown, we've already talked about a little bit. This business about the Second Street stoplights, I think is, is an opportunity to ask Mindat to at least don't remove them yet because we've got stuff that's going to happen downtown. Because they're not going to want to put them back in once they go. So maybe there's a way to play that too. And again, you guys have all the connections. So next slide, please. I won't spend any time talking about this, except that to say, this has been a collaborative effort. And one of the wonderful things has been that the EMS, I'm sorry, I always mix that up, EMSC? ESMC has very graciously allowed us to take some of their graphics with appropriate credentials and, and insert them into the comprehensive plan. Because the comp plan needs to take all these ideas that have come out of all these processes and get them there so that they're visible so that when you have a grant opportunity or when you're making city decisions, that you're recognizing, oh, these things connect. We need to make sure that we're taking advantage of them and sell the money givers on those ideas. Next slide. This slide is here simply to show you your existing water and sewer network. When we think about land use, we should always be thinking, where can we do existing land development, you know, infill mostly, where we have city services already provided? Now, your city's not spending more money on it. It's pretty much developer-driven. But it does tell you where you have some limits. So for instance, if we want to expand to industrial over in this area, we're going to have to do something. So that's a, it's not a bad flag, but it's an indicator for us when we're thinking about future growth areas, where should we start if we have a choice? Let's start where we don't have to invest in the infrastructure. Next slide, please. We also had a section on housing analysis. Now, you've done housing study a few years ago. And in many ways, I think it's fair to say that we basically have agreed with what the study said. And did, we just kind of updated it a little bit. If you were to see these numbers close up, there's a red 195 and a red 146. The dominant thing I want you to get out of this housing analysis is that you need most of all to have more market rate housing in the future.
Correct.
So the map over there is just telling you where the age of your houses are. And, you know, I spent about four hours driving through your city, taking tons of pictures for one day just because I wanted to really cement in my head where there was opportunities for improvement.
So I have a question then, so I was looking at this earlier. And thank you for sending this to us. So this is maximum affordable sale price. And then if you go over to $437,424, so that represents, can you define what that number actually means?
Yeah, it means that people in this income category, that's the maximum that they could get.
In what income category?
Oh, in the, in, so there's a median income. And so at the 100% is median income. And so people that are in this 81 to 100% of a median income are going to be the ones that are capable theoretically.
So someone of median income can afford a $437,000 house, more or less, is what you're saying?
That's more or less what I'm saying. And honestly, the house, we have a housing expert on staff that, that did this part of it. So I hope I didn't put the wrong words in his mouth.
It just seems high. It just seems high.
It does seem high to me as I say that, so.
Because I mean, yeah.
So the, um, I don't even want to go any farther on that except to tell you, I will make sure you get a better explanation that's accurate.
Thank you for showing me the, the number. But yeah, it's just, just interested, make sure that I understood correctly what you're saying.
Thank you.
In explanation, Joseph, the last three years, we have sold, rebuilt three houses and they've sold right around 400 to 450. And the one was 1,400, maybe 1,600, and then the last one was 1,900.
So new construction.
Yep.
Maybe that's the part that was missing. Thank you, Kerry.
Yeah, it's not going to be for a 1,940, our normal stock, yeah.
Okay, more questions on this slide? Next slide, please. So there are pieces in the existing plan that relate to parks, recreation and community facilities. I also work in emergency management. And one of the things that FEMA has really been hot on in the last two years, since June of 2023, is making sure that you, as a local community and as emergency managers in particular, try to do more integrated between the emergency management needs and plans and your other planning efforts. So what I've done in this case is simply highlight four things that came out of, no, two things that came out of your existing, I think, 2023 emergency management plan that seem like they're very significant and worthwhile, thinking about as policy issues for your community. And then there's air conditioning for the sports center. The sports center is already the primary location for sheltering. But without air conditioning, it makes it pretty difficult to use for that kind of purpose in certain circumstances. And then finally, one of the things that's always helpful to do is have emergency operations plans for your critical facilities like schools and those places that are housing people with limited mobility or other vulnerabilities. Next slide, please. Finally, as was already mentioned just briefly, that the, the other study has spent a lot of time talking about tree cannibes and energy. And stormwater management came up in, in dealing with some things. and, um, stormwater management came up and, and dealing with some things there. We want to make sure we integrate all those kinds of ideas into the plan to support the potential for funding them, um, from outside your own, um, budget. And there's a couple more things in here that Carrie has shared with me. We want to make sure we get in just to help, uh, support some issues too. Finally, on economic development, uh, I wrote so many notes that I have skipped through, but I just want to highlight a couple of things here. Yes, so back when I was a kid, um, people were of the mindset that economic development was about chasing smoke stacks. We want one big employer that's going to be this savior of our, you know, provide the economic base for our community. Over time, that attitude has changed to more something that might be called economic gardening. And the first factor, the, the first maybe, um, principle of economic gardening is support the businesses you already have. But beyond that, it's thinking more incrementally. What can we do that's right at the edges of what we're already doing? Where we maybe have workforce or other kinds of assets that make it feasible for people to move into our community. And at the beginning of my presentation, when I was talking about activating and being, uh, stable, I think that that's one of the things you really have to be thinking about. It's how can you take incremental steps to, um, to become this community that has a quality of life and activities that will bring in people? You have a population that's practically 8,000 people. I was working in a community in western North Dakota several years ago that had a population of 2,000 people. And at a smaller size scale, they thought this idea of, uh, a, a plaza, a downtown plaza was a great thing. And they had an empty lot and they, they said, let's, let's try this. Well, it's now, I think 12 years since they decided that. You know what? They outworked the lot. They had so many activities going on in that space that they had to move to another location. That was a city of 2,000. So start small and build on success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have concluded what we brought today. I know there's probably many questions, so if you have questions that you'd like to ask, I, I just, we just didn't want to hold it in the middle, mostly. Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
Yeah, so just.
So I just have a question, some questions for the team. Um, we talked about activating buildings and current assets we have and the housing need that we have. And one of the biggest projects that we've had in the last 20 years that someone did was to take the supermarket and make it into housing. And a lot of people with new apartments were now living there. And I would like to have your input, um, to express to the council and to everyone how that could work, where we could do with certain buildings, not taking the storefront and making housing. But you have like the Quiz building that the, uh, lumberyard people or their brother owns. It's a three story building and they were allowed to make housing on the second floor. But where it's at and with how much retail we have available, if we would allow that to be housing on the first floor, that may give that owner enough cash flow that then they could put an elevator and make housing on the third floor. And now we have 50 units and 250 people live here, 200 people living there, which now supports our economic ability to have a restaurant nearby or other things with all those people. They're going to, anytime you see a big apartment go up, you see a strip mall go nearby or whatever. How, what are some ideas that I remember when I was telling, uh, Shannon that on my web browser, I have six browsers open and two of them are the comprehensive plan, which I'm a geek, yeah. And I just didn't know that this was tonight, so it's very ironic timing. But just, and, and we had a comprehensive plan in 1961 and 1981 and then 2016. People don't know that. Well, we're going to make good strides with this one. The last two times our population just happened to go down because of macroeconomic things, not because of what the team did. But my question is, how can we coexist with main floor apartments in certain buildings where that would drive the population, solve the housing problem, drive the population for allowing people to, activating our buildings to allow people to live downtown where they're not allowed to do that right now? Just some ideas of how that could go. And I remember reading in the 2006, I think maybe you had wrote it, the 2006 comprehensive plan, that the way that can happen is having a different entryway, designing it so that it's maybe a residential looking building. Like I'm saying, the Quiz building is a great example. You could design the entryway in such a way that you could have 10,000 square feet or probably 12 apartments living there, 25 more people downtown. If you look at our whole downtown, we probably have the opportunity for 200 to 300 people to live downtown. That currently, our idea is that we don't want people to live on the main floor because we're maybe scared that's like a certain building is going to have, it look like, you know, we don't, all of our buildings are, wouldn't work to have, not all of our buildings. A lot of our buildings wouldn't work to have apartments on the main floor because the building inspector would say, where's your window for your bed, for your, your bedroom? When it's in the middle of a block, it would be physically impossible to make that building into residential, right? So that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the old prescription drug building. It's three, two or three stories of 20,000 square feet that if that could be converted on the main floor, maybe to start with, let that owner build up so they've got enough capital. Couple of years later, get it paid down, then they put an elevator and now the second floor is more apartments where, you know, not abandoning the strategy of having people living downtown, allowing people to live downtown on the main floors in certain areas, certain buildings, some ideas. And I know the comprehensive plan already addressed in 2016 that we could allow that and how that could work. And we all know that the supermarket worked out great and that was a great, uh, transformation in the residential. But how we could allow that so that it would be beneficial for town, solve the housing, allow people to live downtown on main floors? Just some ideas, yes.
Do you guys have thoughts on that?
Well, I have a couple of things that I would just comment on, but first of all, the comprehensive plan is.
No, Julie, you want to come up, please?
Sorry.
I apologize. Thank you. A comprehensive plan is a long range document and the kind of detail you're talking about doesn't really belong in it. But that doesn't mean I don't have ideas, brainstorms. Um, just very quickly, a couple of things that you really probably, in my opinion, you want to do is figure out which of your assets are the ones that you want to really make sure you keep for, uh, for commercial activity. And as I think about what's going to happen in 2027 for your downtown, uh, for, for your, uh, the one way pair corridor, I want to make sure that I would protect, um, those core, the, the core area. And besides that, of course, part of, part of it is that historic district, you have to decide what your parameters are for your his, historic buildings. You know, there's, there's all kinds of things you could do. There's just plain reuse, uh, you can renovate, you can, um, or should we, restore? So there's, there's levels of effort. I don't know what you're committed to already as a community there. But that'd be the starting point. Figure out what you've got to work with. And then it's really a matter of the do, the dollars and cents. I mean, you can't do stuff and just throw good money after bad. You've got to figure out where our best options are and take one project and do it because you're convinced it's best to convert. That's all the far, there we go.
I want to piggyback on something there. The cities of the future, what's, what's suggested is that they're walkable. Everything's within 10 minutes. And then you, you take a look at Tokyo, for example, huge city, Megalopolises, right? It's huge. And yet people, if you go to the right transit node, you can get into the center of the city. It's fine. So, but as long as you live 10 minutes away from one of those transit spots, you're great. So a lot of what we're talking about is just tran, transportation. Can you get from here to there? And if you make a walk, go back, you made earlier, really. Is you have these areas that, that, that are, that you could live there too. And, but, so what, you know, like, look at the Simmons, you know, they, they, they have a building downtown and they have a shop on the base first floor. They can live on the second story and they can also rent out space. That, that's the city of the future is that you have everything, you don't have to get in your car, right? You don't have to release CO2 in the atmosphere. It's just right there. And, and then we're kind of talking a little bit about that, but anyways, I think that's part of the answer, the gentleman who came out here a minute ago.
Just to piggyback off of your piggyback, um, many, I mean, basically, one of the things that prevents us from really making progress sometimes is we have zoning ordinances that are, um, built for 100 years ago. And so, I mean, I, I recognize the dilemma that you were facing when you were talking about the slaughterhouse. But, but there are ways to start changing what you're going to allow because you think differently. Instead of the old Euclidean, um, perspective, you use a, a more contemporary perspective that starts to allow more things to happen. And the things like you were just talking about with living space and working space as part of your, 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 what you own or even just lease are great examples of what we should be aiming at. Because, I mean, just look at housing sizes. If you think about the number of ranch style houses that are out there in most communities, they're probably good for, you know, if people would be willing to buy them instead of want to build new, they, there's probably enough housing there to, to handle many cities' future kids and families. And what's happening to people like me? I just sold my five bedroom home last year and downsized to a condo. I'm happy not to do my yard. Anyways, thank you for the time. And I know that research wise, Tori and Mary probably have tons more, uh, insights into the whole big picture change that's happening.
One of the most important slides that you went back and talked about was the one that's showing where you have your cohorts, your age cohorts. So there is a pulse of people. So one, one thing that's not talked about here so far much is how do you keep that younger cohort here, right? That's, that's the key. Because then, if not, then, then it's like that cohort doesn't exist and they, and they go to, you know, resources elsewhere. So I think if the focus of part of the planning and the vision is, is to make sure enough of those amenities exist in the city so that the younger population wants to stay here. Because your data shows that you had shown earlier, which I have on my screen here, they're here. And if you just keep that going up through the cohorts, they stay and you have families grow, right?
And if we start thinking about the brainstorms about what crux could be besides what it is right now? I mean, there's opportunities to bring more people who are, uh, Gen Z's, Gen, shoot, I don't remember which one my daughter is, but you know, those people go to the, they, they make, they make decisions based on something other than a job, which is what I did. You know, they are interested in quality of life, so let's give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mary or Tori, any maps you want to see or further explanations?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to just add one more thing and that is that, yeah, I really appreciate the idea of, of strategies to, um, build some assets to have housing. I agree. Anyway, we had 30 slides today. We have a lot more. Those are, there are a number of sections, um, showing, um, what Minda is, um, suggesting her street should look like and what our suggestions are. We also have some precedents so that you can see what his, some of the suggestions that we are making have been done in other places. And that will be part of our, um, our whole package that you can all have, um, access to. I just want you to know that there's, there's more. But we had to pare things down in order to, uh, really focus on the big ideas and not get into, um, a level of minutia that would bog us down and, and prevent us from presenting the big ideas to you. So anyway, um, we have them. They're in, they're part of, they're set up like the slides. They have small print because part of, of what we're doing is we are going to be making a final report. This, this work will be in the final report and so some of the graphics were tailored for that, um, final report. But we, um, we appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation to you and, and start the conversation. We have a lot more ideas and, um, would be glad to share some of them with you in the future. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was going to say, there's five cities in the northwest region that, that are, are having this, the emerging small Minnesota communities. And I think there's 25 total in the state or something like that, if I'm correct.
Oh, there are a few more, like, what, 80? You're not 80?
Well, we're, I'm estimating, but, but.
I'm in this year.
We were the pilot project and I think we were great, um, getting things for the, for this project to happen. But I'm really happy that it corresponded with Joel's project. And I just want to say thank you to our council. Thank you so much to all these meetings that you have to go to and I keep dragging you to. And there'll be more and we are looking at the, uh, the older library that you were discussing. That's a historic, Taylor and I are going on a mission on that. We're looking at what can we do in 2027 to really spiff up our back street there on the, over by the railroad. Uh, got ahold of railroad to say, what can we do? We want to make sure we're aligned with them. Where can we go to find some funds to help them make their back doors look really cool? Because how are people going to access their buildings? So we have a lot of active projects happening right now. And if you'd like to talk to Taylor and myself and I, or us about it, we'd be happy to do that. So thank you so much for everything you guys.
Thank you. Shannon, Carrie, Mary, Tori, Joel, thank you very much for everything you have done. So, nothing else. We are adjourned.